We'll call the meeting of the Door County Board of Supervisors June 25th to order. I'm supposed to take my time. Stand and give the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did it again.
There is a "come after God," by the way. Roll call, you want to go to the border board and...
Hold on.
Hold on. Supposed to take it slow.
Okay.
Okay, press the... Do you have those ones that are absent?
It's not talking to us.
I thought you said this was going to be a quick one.
Let's try it again.
Now, I don't know if you got the... There's nineteen present, two are excused, Haynes and Meyer. Next item is presentation agenda. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Mark. You approve the agenda? We're going to take some roll call, just regular voice votes on this, some of this stuff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is passed. Correspondents, you've all got the letter from Doug Weimer from the Southern Door Fire Department. We're going to pass that letter on to the emergency government, emergency services committee, and risk management committee to answer his letter to him. I saw Doug, where is he out? Yeah, and you'll be getting an answer to most of your questions, or all your questions, and awful lot of them have been answered already, but some of the meetings you weren't too, and et cetera, and they will be answered, and other than that, that's the best we can do right this time. And also, you have on your desk... Yes, Dale.
Like, comment on that tonight, there's going to be a troop chiefs meeting for AMRs in the Village of Ag Harbor, and it's going to be addressing a lot of this and getting the concerns out, and try to get equal ground on this.
Okay. And also on your desk is a letter to each supervisor from the Fundamentalist Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints, and you can do with that what you so choose. I didn't think it was the option of us to... It's up to you what you want to do with it. Next is public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment? Go ahead.
President of Sebastopol, I'm here as an observer for the League of Women Voters. Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ms. Rebecca Kerwin, and I live at 23 South Hudson Avenue, Sturgeon Bay. I am an employee of Door County, and I do work in the planning department. However, I'm speaking to you now as a resident, and I'm not on work time, I am using paid time off for this talk. Although my comments are zoning related, they are not meant to be critical of the planning department or the resource planning committee, and they're given with all due respect to committee and staff members. My topic concerns the number and types of commercial uses that are being authorized in agricultural and zoning, and rural zoning districts within the county. Just over one year ago, the county adopted a fine arts venue zoning category, which is allowed in agricultural and rural zoning districts via a conditional use permit. In April of this year, the county also adopted active, outdoor active recreation facilities, which is another commercial use allowed in agricultural and rural zoning districts via conditional use permit. These are just two recently authorized commercial uses, in addition to multiple other commercial uses already allowed that have been in the zoning ordinance for some time. While some commercial uses can be appropriate for agricultural and rural districts, there is a growing trend towards allowing more and more commercial uses that are not related to agriculture. At the same time, some commercial uses that are related to agriculture continue to be restricted. One example is that farm markets can only have up to thirty percent of their display area containing processed food, even if the processed food is made from farm produce grown on their own farm. So a cherry grower can only have up to thirty percent of his or her display area containing cherry pies or other processed cherry products. The rest of the display area must be unprocessed items. In my opinion, if the county deems it important to allow commercial uses in agricultural and rural zoning districts at all, it would be of greater value to the county to allow commercial uses that are actually related to agriculture, rather than zip lines, concert halls, and social barns. So, that's all I would like to say today. Thank you very much for your attention, and now I'm going back to work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment publicly? If not, we have supervisors' response. If anybody from supervisors would like to respond to any of this? If not, we'll move on. We have a special report today of the Circuit Court and the Family Court Commissioner. We have, be honored to have both judges here, and Jennifer Miller. I don't know how you guys got this... You all coming together? Good. This is pretty important. Yeah, they come to get us.
Actually, we rode with Commissioner Miller, so we didn't all bring our own cars.
Well, we've got, there's only about four or five pages that we've got that are actual handouts, and what we want to do is expand on each of these pages, and so it's going to be much more verbal than giving you just a slideshow. First of all...
You want to hit the lights? There.
Just to give you an idea, how the state courts are run, they're run out of Madison. The state, Wisconsin State Courts is in Madison, and the seventy-two counties are divided up into ten judicial districts. We're in the eighth judicial district, and it includes those seven counties, and there's a director of state courts down in Madison that has working under them, him, a district court administrator for each of the districts. John Powell is our district court administrator. And then in addition to that, each judicial district has a judge who's designated as the chief judge of the district. So that's pretty much how it's administered. What Madison wants us to do gets to us through the district court administrator and the chief judge primarily. They, amongst other things, the district court administrator will determine out-of-county assignments for different judges. That is, because of budget problems, they're not using reserve judges very much, so if for some reason in Okanto County, the two judges there can't hear a case, it'll be assigned to a judge outside of that county. And we find that we're getting an awful lot of these assignments, and in fact, we had John Powell look for calendar year 2012, and it turns out that, as we suspected, we had gotten thirty-three out-of-county assignments that we're doing for other counties, and by comparison, only four cases went out of Door County into other counties. So, you know, these take a lot of time. We don't go too much into Brown County, but when we have to go to Marinette or Okanto, it can be somewhat time-consuming. And typically, we don't get out-of-county assignments on simple cases, there are more complex ones that the judges there are involved in. For instance, I've got a draining, drainage district dissolution matter before me in Okanto County. Well, I didn't know what a drainage district is, and it's a pretty big case, four different cases have been consolidated, and the judges there appoint the commission, so they can't do the case. So this is going to, you know, in the next year, require quite a bit of time.
Yeah, I would just add, earlier this year was, I was appointed to the case last year in Marinette County, but ended up having to do a two-day jury trial in Marinette earlier this year. So, you know, some of these cases can be, you know, resolved fairly quickly. I think, you know, when you acted upon the, our request for the updated video conferencing information, that's very helpful to us, because in a lot of those cases, for real routine matters, we can conduct those hearings. We're in our courtrooms here in Sturgeon Bay, and everyone is in the courtroom in Marinette, and with the video conferencing, you know, it saves us to Marinette, a four-hour round trip, you know, drive, that we do not have to do that. If we can do some of that, that sort of work by video conference. So it's very helpful to us, and while, when we submit mileage, I mean, because we obviously get paid our mileage, you know, we submit that to the state, but all of us are state taxpayers also, so we're, you're not only saving with that video conferencing equipment Door County citizens more money, but as state citizens and taxpayers, you're saving them that money also. But if you just look at thirty-three cases, the district court administrator said to us when he gave us that information, if you figure you spend five hours of time on each of those cases, do the math, that's a hundred and sixty hours, that's four weeks of our, you know, combined, you know, time over the year. And so, we do get a lot of out-of-county appointments for whatever reason. In Okanto and Marinette, they've got a number of newer judges. In Okanto, the newest judge there was the DA, so it, you know, there were a lot of, we got kind of a slew of cases that we did get appointed to, just because obviously, those were cases that had been in his office, he couldn't deal with them, and if the other judge wasn't able to. That's where we see a lot of times, you know, a lot of out-of-county assignments is when new judges come on the bench. But our primary, the primary county that we get assigned to is obviously Kiwanee County. I mean, Judge, there's only one circuit court judge in Kiwanee County, Judge Mylesova. It's a case Judge Mylesova can't hear, usually Judge Dilts or myself will get appointed those. If it is, of those four that were assigned out of county, I would say probably two or three, or maybe not even all, maybe all four of them were probably assigned to Judge Mylesova. So the district court administrator tries to keep it, you know, close to home, but, you know, as I said, we just, with Okanto and Marinette, we just recently have had, you know, a number of cases that we've got assigned to. As a matter of fact, I'm going to Outagame tomorrow, to Appleton, where case involving some attorneys that are feuding, where all the judges there didn't feel they could handle that case, so I need to go to Appleton tomorrow. So unfortunately, I can't do my video conference, so...
The other, there's another slide after this that goes into case types, and we want to explain to you a little bit about what we do, and that's, we find that when leadership at Door County or learning and retirement comes through, we do sessions with them probably four or five times a year, or something like that, and we're amazed at how uninformed, I guess you could say, about what we do. They think that what you see in the paper is all that we're doing, and so they get the impression that we're doing drunk driving cases, that, you know, that's primarily what Door County judges do, and it, when we tell them what we're actually doing, and, you know, they're pretty surprised. And so, it occurred to us that maybe you might not know exactly what we're doing. These are the types of court cases that we do, and there's a couple of things that distinguish Door County from other counties, partly because we're smaller, but even distinguishes us from smaller counties. One, we don't have any municipal courts. So that's very rare in Wisconsin, and that means that all traffic and anything that would go through municipal courts, we do that as part of the circuit court. So that's one thing. And the other thing is, is that, and this has been historic in Door County, we don't utilize court commissioners to anywhere near the extent that other counties do. Ms. Miller, Commissioner Miller, does family law cases, the pending, you know, temporary hearings and divorces. She fills in now because she's on-site and can fill in when we can't do something, the things that she's permitted to do. But frankly, we limit the amount that court commissioners do here. They do much more in other counties. And just to give you an example, in Brown County, which has eight judges, they don't, the judges there do not do small claims cases. They only get like what would be a de novo appeal of a small claims case, so it's about five percent of them that they might actually hear. The rest of them are all done by court commissioners, and you'll get to a slide at the end, we'll show you the number of cases we have, and I think I saw that last year we had six-hundred-and-sixty small claims cases. Well, certainly, they're not all contested, but a good deal of them are, and that's a big consumption of time. And they're awful cases, they're lousy cases, I don't know about, anyway, I don't like them.
And in criminal cases, for instance, in Brown County, again, as an example, the first time the judge, any of the judges see criminal defendants are when they're in court for an arraignment. Their court commissioners do the bail hearings, their court commissioners do the initial appearances, and their court commissioners do the preliminary hearings. So, you know, the first, a criminal defendant sees a judge is when they're actually going into court to enter their plea. The court commissioners do all those preliminary matters. As Judge Dilts mentioned, just the municipal court issue, we say to our colleagues in Milwaukee County that we handle the truant tickets, we handle the parking tickets, we handle the speeding tickets, I mean, they almost laugh at us, like, you know, they would never, you know, be dealing with that kind of stuff. That, their court commissioners do all that. So what we do, you know, I, we probably could have had the, our district court administrator look it up for us. I don't know if there's any other county in the state of Wisconsin that doesn't have a municipal court somewhere that's handling, you know, their traffic tickets and whatever, at least in their, you know, their cities, their consolidated cities.
The one other thing that was up there on the slide before is other things that we're just recently doing, and it sort of ties in with the court commissioner. There was a case that the US Supreme Court, Missouri versus McNeely, came out with, I think it was in April, and it basically, so you might have heard about it, you can't do blood tests now on, when somebody stopped for drunk driving, without a search warrant signed by the judge in most instances. There's still some situations on a case-by-case basis where it can be done without a warrant, but the general rule is, is you need to do a warrant, and what that means is, is that somebody, a judge or a court commissioner, in the middle of the night, when they get a call from the hospital from the arresting officer, has to go through probably about a twenty, twenty-five minute procedure to see whether or not to issue a warrant so that they can draw blood. It's a huge issue. In other counties, like Milwaukee, we've talked to our colleagues down there, and they say, "Well, you're doing those? We have our court commissioners do them." Well, Judge Ayers and I got together with Commissioner Miller, and we made a passing attempt, I think I did, that maybe Ms. Miller should also be in our rotation to do these in the middle of the night, and we concluded, Judge Ayers reasoned and was correct, this is really our job. And so, that's what we've got. Fortunately, we haven't had many, but we're on-call, like a lot of the other places. So I think Judge Ayers was in Mel, Madison, and had his phone with him all the time, ready, and the papers that we have to do, so that's just another new thing that's come up, and you'll probably be hearing more about that as we go along. Briefly, when we get, when we look at all of those court cases, Judge Ayers and I have a little difference of opinion as to how much criminal, it's basically criminal and civil is, are the two major types of cases we do.
Do you want to see the numbers?
Yeah, and it, the numbers aren't going to really reflect the, but we estimate, my estimation is, is that the total time, not just in court, but behind the scenes, we spend about thirty percent on criminal and seventy percent on civil. Judge Ayers is of a mind that it's much closer to fifty percent, if not more, and probably after last week thinks it's about seventy percent, but...
It's a friendly disagreement.
But, and I do agree that our time in court is about half of that might be criminal, but we spend so much time going through briefs and stuff on the civil cases, that, you know, I think that that outweighs it. There's a couple of things about the criminal case. I think that in the last year or so it's come up, somebody's had questions about how we appoint court-appointed attorneys, and what happens is, is that every, in a criminal case, every defendant's entitled to an attorney at public expense if they can establish that they can't afford one. The first thing they do is they go to the public defender. If they qualify for the public defender, fine, that's, you know, a state system. If they don't qualify for the public defender, then we have them go out and try and hire an attorney. If they talk to attorneys and don't think that they can afford one, they can come in with a petition. We look at what the attorneys are going to charge, the type of case, and what their income or assets are, their financial situation, and then make a determination if they're entitled to counsel at county expense. We always tell them when we appoint them, if you okay, we think you qualify, you understand the expectation is going to be that you're going to have to pay back the county. We can't say you're absolutely going to do that, because we have to do it on a case-by-case basis, but we establish that right away, and if we appoint counsel, then we try and get them on a wage assignment, we get them to sign a contract that they're going to pay back the county. I think there's been some question on how, where do we get these attorneys? These attorneys, first of all, are paid seventy dollars an hour. In some other counties, they're paying up to a hundred or more for these attorneys. It's really by county. I think seventy is the minimum by the Supreme Court rule, but we've been able to find attorneys to do it at seventy. That having been said, we don't have a big pool of attorneys, and the problem is, is that when you go outside of Door County, you get somebody in Brown County to do one of these cases, and we end up paying travel time. And if the county ends up stuck with that bill, it's a higher bill than, so we try to keep them in county as much as possible. And there's no magic formula. We don't, we don't really try and necessarily be fair and portion these out. We do what's best for the court system, what's best for the defendant, and it's a matter of who will take them, it's a small pool of those, and, you know, we look at their bills, and if the bills come in, we were both in private practice, we know what bill, you know, we can look at bills, and if there's something that looks out of the ordinary, we'll understand that, and maybe question, if somebody routinely comes in with bills that we think are much higher than they should be, we're less likely to appoint them. It's as simple as that. A lot of it's availability, sometimes we match up people that we think would be a good attorney with that defendant. You know, it's just a, sort of an instinctive thing, but we don't have any kind of system where we try to apportion it equally between our, the attorneys. That's not our concern. You know, our concern is more the smooth and efficient operation of our cases.
And we do work, try to work with Nancy Robillard and her clerks. I mean, we understand this is an expense to the county. We set these people up, as Judge Dilts said, on a wage assignment or a monthly payment plan, and I think both of us are pretty conscientious about every time that that defendant is in court, you know. I will have checked the receipts to make sure they're maintaining their monthly payment that they're supposed to be on, you know, it's another one of those things where I hear a lot of excuses why they haven't been making their payment, but we try to be very conscientious of staying on top of them to make sure that they make those monthly payments.
The other places where we have to appoint attorneys typically are in the fourth and the fifth one down, children in need of protective service or CHIPS cases. We have to appoint a guardian ad litem, an attorney to represent the children's interest in those, and that's also true with termination of parental rights. And then in divorces and paternity cases, if there's a dispute as to placement or legal custody, an attorney has to be appointed to represent the children's interests. In the family cases, we can get deposits, and, you know, we try and as much as possible make that private pay, but, you know, sometimes they don't have the money to do it, and the children are right in the middle, so, you know, the county does get stuck with some of those, more than we would like, but there's not much we can do about that. Those attorneys, again, there's some requirements, they have to have so much training to be certified to be able to do these cases, so that's a smaller pool, and we have to make sure that they don't have any conflict of interest, because they may have represented, for instance, the parents in prior actions or something like that, so that they're then eliminated. So, it's pretty much people that we, the guardian ad limes that we get, they're ones that we think are going to do a good job, quite frankly, and we're very fortunate. We've got a pool of, what, five or six primarily in Door County that really do a good job. They really do, and we're much more fortunate than other counties. So, that's pretty much where we appoint attorneys. There is the other slide that shows sort of continuing cases. In family cases, you know, sometimes people think, if you look at our statistics at the end, you'll see, well, there's only this many family cases. Well, a family case where there's a custody, a placement issue, when the children are, let's say, three, or four, or five, those cases, some of those go until the children are eighteen. So it's, it's not at all unusual for us to have a fifteen-year divorce, where they continually come back in on changes of placement. And I can tell you, it's the same thing with child support, too, because, you know, if there's non-payment of child support, you come back, and I can tell you from our clerks that do, from Nancy's office, that do family law cases, they'll say, "I think in December that kid's turning eighteen," you know, and we're, finally, after twelve years, we're going to stop having those hearings and everything. So they, they can take on a life of their own. The other thing is in protective placements, which are sort of a corollary to guardianships, the law requires that, I think it's section 5518, every year, the county caseworker has to file a report, an annual report and evaluation, so that the courts can review whether that protective placement is still needed in the least restrictive environment. So every year, people who are on protective placement, we have judicial reviews on them. They don't take much time, but it's a requirement.
And as Judge Dilts said, you know, those, just relating this back to out-of-county appointments, the real horror is when you get assigned an out-of-county family case, we remain on that case for that next twelve years until those kids turn eighteen. So that number of thirty-three cases we got last year doesn't include, I know, probably, I know there's four or five cases that every year, I'm down in Kiwanee dealing with, you know, somebody's not paying child support, or, you know, somebody now wants custody of the kids for the school year, whatever, that we're dealing with those cases. So, you know, every time I see one of those come across, and it's a family case, you know, you just cringe a little bit, but hey, you bite the bullet and do what you got to do.
And then I, the other ones are nine-eighty cases, which are sexually violent offenders who, after they've served their sentence, are civilly committed, because they're a sexually violent offender, and they haven't been properly treated. Every year, they can apply for discharge. I got an Okanto county case, I think he was committed in 2003 or '04, and some conflict came up, so I've got it, and I'll have it, you know, as long as I'm on the bench now. And every year, he'll apply for a discharge again. Last, I think it was September, I went over for a two-day trial on that. No sooner get that finished than he's going to apply for the next year. So those go on basically forever, until they're either, you know, the court finds they can go on supervised release or be discharged. So those are other cases that can sort of take on a life of their own.
And you may wonder how it's determined which branch cases end up in. I mean, Judge Dilts doesn't do all the civil cases, I don't do all the criminal cases. We utilize an alternating monthly intake process, where on even-numbered months I'm on intake, obviously Judge Dilts is on intake, in odd-numbered months, so any new criminal, traffic, probate, guardianship files, our cases that are started in the month of June, I'm obviously responsible for those cases now until they're actually concluded. So that's, which is different than some of the larger counties. You go down to Milwaukee County, they are on a two-year family rotation, where all they do is family cases, or they might be in felony murder, you know, court, where that's all they do. So, for us, that works out well, because it's, you know, we see everything, like I said, on any given day, I can be dealing with a parking ticket, and then can be doing a, you know, felony sexual assault sentencing, and then, you know, dealing with, you know, somebody that's not paying their child support. So it, you know, makes our days interesting, that, you know, we can deal with any and everything any given day of the week.
I do want to, we want to wrap this up, but in the civil cases, the slide that we've got up there, that really doesn't reflect the diversity of the, of the amount of civil cases you can have, for instance, contracts, rebuilding disputes, I mean, it just goes on and on, the different types of civil cases that you can have, and what's in personal injury cases, the ones that are filed, the biggest trend in the last few years is, is that you have insurance coverage issues on these, and these go on, you know, so it's a two-part of a civil case, and the law is, is that if there's an insurance coverage issue, you generally bifurcate and stay the main action until you can determine whether or not there's coverage, a duty to defend or a duty to indemnify. So these, you know, stretch out the cases, and, you know, these are the types of cases that you end up with a box, because the files aren't big enough, because they file so many briefs on this stuff, and that's stuff that we're doing behind the scenes that, you know, we're not doing on the bench. So that's a later trend.
You'd want to go to the staff?
Sure. Yeah, I was going to say, let's go out to the staff, and just briefly to...
Yeah, our staff is obviously Judge Dilts and myself, we're the judges. I expect all of you understand, but just for your information, we are state employees, we are paid through the state of Wisconsin. We each have a court reporter, our court reporters who we appoint, they serve at our will, are also state employees, so you're, other than the taxes you pay to Madison, you're not paying their salaries. We each have a judicial assistant, our judicial assistants are county employees, you're on the hook for those positions. Commissioner Miller, which I expect those of you that have been on the board for a while, Commissioner Miller has been the combined family court commissioner, registered probate now for...
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. Prior to our combining those positions, we had a part-time family court commissioner and a full-time registered probate, but when Judy Schneider was getting ready to retire two and a half years ago, we discussed it with Grant and other individuals in the county system, and combined those positions, and I think at that time realized we were saving the county by combining those positions, and, you know, we're not trying to take credit for anything, but we will, you know, about $25,000 a year by combining those positions with benefits. And then Commissioner Miller does have a half-time assistant that works in her office, which when she's doing temporary hearings, or has other, you know, court obligations of... when she's doing temporary hearings or has other, you know, court obligations, you know, provides coverage in her office.
That's worked out really well, having a full-time attorney besides the two of us that can hear cases if we're not around. It's, it's really helped scheduling. It's, it's worked out great. I, just, in regard to our staff, I just want to say, give them a shout out. They're, they really are good. We've got, we've had a lot of stability. I think my court reporter is probably the most recent and she's been with me for seven years. So, our two judicial assistants do all the scheduling and they work together really well. I mean, they plan their vacations, when they're going to be gone, when they have to go to the doctor to make sure that we've got coverage. We don't, we don't have to do any of that. They just work it out between themselves and we end up looking at it and approving it. So, that's a real benefit. And then our court reporters, likewise, although they're state employees, they get along real well. And, you know, they fill in for each other and we're just very, very fortunate that our staff is so cooperative and they, they really help us make our jobs easier. Mr. Chairman, we may not have left any time for questions.
That's up to you guys.
We tended to. We're available if you've got the time. It's up to you.
Go, go ahead. You can deflect if you don't want to answer.
You mentioned that municipal clerk, then if you had a municipal clerk, would that be a state of play or a...
A municipal court?
No, clerk, you mentioned that clerks did a lot of the work in other counties that you...
No, court commissioners, court commissioners would do that. No, they would be in Milwaukee County where they have their court commissioners, in Brown County where they have their court commissioners. Those are county employees.
That's, I, I didn't tie that in. The whole reason historically that Door County has not utilized court commissioners more is it's a shift of costs from what the judges do to county paid. And that really went back to when Judge Kane was on and I was the family court commissioner. At that time, because we had one judge, my duties were expanded. But then as soon as we got two courts, we cut it back down again in 1994. So, we didn't need to use court commissioners and that's helped till today.
I want to thank you for coming today. Well, you can answer more questions. Go ahead, answer Biz.
Judge, could you elaborate just real briefly on why it's necessary to have a checkpoint with people going up on the second floor of the Justice Center and, you know, the disgruntled people that wind up in your court, whether it's over children or divorce cases?
Well, I'll start with it. First of all, we're really fortunate. The sheriff provides excellent security for us. I mean, that's, we're, we're really lucky. And with the checkpoint and then one security person roving, they keep track of our schedules and they, they're really good. They know even a week before, they'll look at what cases we have in, and it's a small enough county, that they know who's coming in and which family file or which small times case, people don't get along or this person's can get sort of, you know, out of hand. And what they do is the person that roves, roams, comes down and just will come into the courtroom and, and come into the back during a proceeding and people will turn around and see him. And it really helps to keep things down and to keep order. Then they'll go into the other courtroom. And part of the thing is, is that if you have that security where you're checking for the weapons and things like that, then you don't have to have as much security past the checkpoint because, you know, you know you've got a pretty clean second floor. And so, you know, I, I think that there, there ultimately is some savings in, in doing that. We've got excellent security. We hear it all the time from attorneys coming in out of town. You would think, I mean, the expectation when we first started this was is that people are going to be disgruntled by it, and there's a few people, but for the most part, it's widely accepted and the attorneys coming in who are submitted to it and you think that they might be the ones that would be grumbling about it, they're appreciative of it. So, it's worked out real well and, you know, at other times, as Judge Ellis can tell you, more security is needed.
Right. I mean, it's, it's just not the criminal cases. I mean, when you're dealing with family cases, when you're dealing with people coming in for restraining orders, domestic abuse cases, I mean, it's just removing one element of a potential disaster. I mean, I, you know, went on the bench in 2000 and we moved over to the new building in 2005. And I never, I don't ever recall in that five years that I was still in this building, sitting up on the bench thinking to myself, well, I wonder if that person's got a weapon or that person's got a weapon, you know. I had more important things to be doing at that point. But it just removes that element from it. I mean, that's not to say somebody's not going to get out of control or whatever else, but at least they're not going to have a weapon when they're doing that. They can start throwing chairs, but at least they're not, you know, firing guns. So, one thing I just, one, we're kind of wrapping up here and I want to mention it. You, I'm sure, you know, you hear on the radio, you read in the paper about the Victim Impact Panel. That's a program that we've had for repeat drunk drivers going on now. We started it shortly after I came on the bench. And I just want to do a shout out to one of your fellow members here. Holly Runquist is instrumental in that program continuing to run. Holly is responsible for getting our speakers there and, you know, helps us with that three times a year. And if she didn't do that and Helen Baker did it for years before she did, that program would not be ongoing. And the other thing I want to mention to all of you, that our next Victim Impact Panel is October 10th, over at the Justice Center, 7:00 P.M. We are going to have a very interesting program. Trooper Tim Austin, who is a, he's a trooper with the State Patrol, he does a lot of their accident investigation, whatever, he's going to be one of our speakers that evening on October 10th. And if you're available, I just want to invite all of you to come to that because, I mean, he's got, you know, a show that he puts on and it's not a show, it's, it's an important program. But I mean, he uses an accident, a drunk driving accident that occurred in Marinette that he investigated and he's got the, you know, the diagrams and the whole layout. It's, I just want to invite all of you and maybe Holly will remind all of you about as we get closer, but if you want to know what that Victim Impact Panel is about, you know, I just wanted to invite all of you to come over that evening and see that. We've got lots of room for you if you're coming on over, so.
And of course, the other thing is, is that, you know, the invitation that we've extended in the past, but just to re-extend, anytime any of you want to come over and spend a half a day to see what we do in the courts, let us know. Sort of the ride-along type thing. People have done that in the past and we'll find a day that we think is reflective and, you know, of what we do. We maybe give you a criminal intake on a, on a Monday morning for a couple hours or a family day. And I think you might be surprised at the types of cases that come in and some of the situations, particularly in the family files, that come up like on child support collection and where there aren't real good solutions, although you're always trying to find one. I think you'd be very interested in it. So, if anybody's interested, let us know and we can certainly set that up.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, I knew you were coming, but I didn't know you, we'd be honored with those two.
Did you have anything, Commissioner Miller, that you wanted to add?
Well, on the subject of the county being on the hook for things, we collect filing fees for probate. Nancy collects filing fees for a lot of the civil cases that are filed in the county. We give two-thirds back to the state of Wisconsin and they give us aid to the courts and aid to the guardian at light of. It doesn't cover all of it, certainly doesn't cover all of our court costs, but it helps, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your support. We appreciate it.
You're back to work.
Okay, continuing on, we have the Administrator's Monthly Report is next.
Yes, and it's going to feel like Law Day here because the, the Administrator's Monthly Report talks a lot about the reasons, you know, we all try very hard to keep all of our business because we're doing the people's business in an open session in a transparent way. I know the chairman very much wants to do that. But there are a couple of purposes why it's necessary for us to go into closed session. In my monthly report, I've attached those. Those of you probably are very familiar with those, with this, but some of you may be new to this. There are roughly eight purposes why we do that. It's in your packet. Feel free to review them. But this past month in particular, an unusual month, we've had two reasons why we've had to go into closed session. First and foremost, labor negotiations. As you all know, we have our public safety employees that continue to bargain as they always have. They approached us, their contracts expire at the end of December 31st of 2013, at the end of this year. They've approached us wanting to begin those contract negotiations as we always have. So, the negotiating committee, which hasn't met for a few years, has begun to meet. That committee is made up of the chairman, Supervisor Zipper, Supervisor Fisher and Supervisor Gunlickson. We've begun the process to begin that initial exchange of offers that'll occur at the conclusion of this meeting. Supervisor Gunlickson has been assigned to assist staff at the paramedic negotiating committee level. Supervisor Fisher is going to be working with us as we negotiate with the deputy sheriffs. This is a long process. It may take a couple of months. I know Grant loves to hear that. But a couple of months to get this accomplished, it may be as easy as a, a month or two. So, know that we'll be working and as we do this, we'll be doing that in closed session. The other item that's come up this past month is, as you know, Door County has been approached by a national retailer. Those discussions regarding property acquisition along 14th Avenue, again, are an item why we go into closed session. I don't anticipate that that's going to resolve itself quickly. So, the committee has asked, and this is the property committee, has asked staff to acquire as much information as we can regarding this. So, I think there's going to be a couple more closed sessions on that item as well. So, that's my report for the month. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the minutes of May 28th, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Seconded by Hugh Mulligan, seconded by Dale Wiegand. Is there any additions, subtractions or corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. We'll go to commercial hangar site lease agreements. Gary Peterson and Jeff Strobel. Chuck, you want to explain, make a motion?
This is, again, one of our standard hangar lease agreements that we do. Writer first refusal was turned down by our committee to move forward with the county actually purchasing these hangers. And we feel it's in the best interest that we move forward with the lease. And whereas private and public concerns have been reluctant to construct or operate private non-commercial hangers at the Door County Cherryland Airport, and whereas the airport and parks committee deems the presence of non-commercial hangers at the Door County Cherryland Airport to be advantageous to the airport, and whereas the airport and parks committee believes it is reasonable and necessary to offer a multi-year non-commercial hangar site lease agreements as an incentive to stimulate the growth and development of the Door County Cherryland Airport. Now therefore be it resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors does hereby give approval to the airport and parks committee to enter into a 10-year non-commercial hangar site lease agreement with the 10-year renewal clause for the parcel of land on which building number 53 and 60 have been constructed. And I move to pass this resolution forward.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Biz. You want to take a voice vote or... Hold on. We'll take a voice vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Nineteen two absent. The resolution for year-end closeout general fund, David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2013-44, 2012 year-end closeout to the general fund.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Joel Gunlickson. Go ahead and explain it.
What this is, as you are aware, we always report our un-audited, unassigned fund balance every month. And it's now been completed for 2012. The audit is complete and we're closing out. We have an additional $2,412,464.88 to transfer from the listed departments back into the general unassigned fund. And that's what this resolution is for.
Okay. Are there any questions on the amounts or anything? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Next item is the committee appointment. We have a resolution to appoint Steve Case to the Door County Housing Authority. His resume or is in, involved, could we have a second, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mark, seconded by...
I'll second.
Dale Wiegand. Is there any questions on that?
If this is as short by a little, it is longer.
I thought the same thing. It's pretty impressive. Is there any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Approval of the weed management area private forest grant. Hugh Mulligan, would you like to make a motion and explain it?
Certainly, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt 2013-46. It's a grant of, I believe, $13,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Yep.
Seconded by, please, go ahead and explain, Hugh, then.
Well, I'm looking for the, the financial amount, but I believe it was $13,000 from the DNR to...
Bill, Bill Schuster's back there. If you'd like him to come forward.
It's there.
It's there. 13.
It is 13,000. Yeah, okay, good.
Bill's coming forward, Hugh, if you want to deflect him.
Go ahead. It's for Parsons. I don't believe Parsons.
It's a DNR grant which has requirements that it be used on forested land and that two private landowners are involved in the project. So, it's essentially a pass-through grant money for two landowners along the Bay Shore to work on invasive species. Pretty straightforward. It's a relatively, I think I've shared with many of you that there are programs and funds available for aquatic plants, but very difficult to find terrestrial. This is one of the few terrestrial grants available.
Are there any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed and we're going to take a five-minute break.
Money.
You're pretty good.
No, Reeke Caven.
Oh.
No, we're not. Reeke Caven and we'll go to the ordinances, text amendment, Town of Liberty Grove report. Mr. Fisher.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I will read the explanation.
Make a motion to approve the report.
Yes, I will do that to all four of them. And I, well, I'm just telling you, I will read the, I'll make the motion, read the explanation and call on Mariah to do any technical explanation and answer any questions that the other supervisors might have. That's acceptable with you.
Make a motion and I'll have a second and you can talk.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the zoning ordinance text amendment regarding art galleries and wineries from Liberty Grove.
Seconded by Susan. Okay, now.
All right, I'll read the explanation. The Town of Liberty Grove petitioned the amendment to amend the requirements within Town Overlay Section 4.04/15 so that art galleries may be established in any building provided the exterior reflects the architectural character of the rural areas of the town. In addition, the town would like to allow wineries, but not breweries, to be established in the Heartland zoning districts. And the, Mariah can explain the difference as to why they said breweries would not be, but wineries could. Anyway, with that being said, the recommendation was the Resource Planning Committee recommends approval of a modified version of this zoning amendment petition and the enactment of amended, ammendatory ordinance number 2013-10. The modification is the last sentence within section 4.04/15 for clarification purposes. And with that, I'd ask Mariah to come up and answer the questions.
She's there, she's ready.
Okay, Mariah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. There's really two topics at hand here. We let the town just turn in one petition and pay one fee and have one hearing because both related to the Heartland District, but there's two separate issues. The easiest one to explain first is the last sentence that Ken already read to you in the explanation, which says that the town would like to allow wineries, but not breweries, to be established in the Heartland zoning districts. Right now, and I should say that we have Heartland zoning in a number of towns. Liberty Grove is the town that invented it a number of years ago, but now it is in other places. And in the Heartland zoning district, you're not allowed to have a winery or a brewery. Liberty Grove has decided that they would like to have wineries, but not breweries in Liberty Grove in those Heartland districts. So, that is what they're petitioning for. The explanation that they gave at the Resource Planning Committee level as to why they wanted wineries, but not breweries was, I think, just that they felt that breweries often have a more commercial component or feel to them and that those belong more in their commercial districts. And the Resource Planning Committee members can correct me if I'm wrong or add to that or add to that if they think I've missed something. The second topic with regard to this amendment has to do with art galleries in Heartland, in Liberty Grove. Previously, for a number of years, the Town of Liberty Grove did not allow art galleries in Heartland, even though it was allowed in other towns in Heartland, but they did not allow them in Liberty Grove in Heartland unless it was done as a home business. They did not want to have standalone art galleries popping up all over the place for some reason. About five years ago, they decided that they wanted to change that overlay and allow art galleries in Heartland, in Liberty Grove, but only if those galleries were going into buildings that were constructed prior to 1954, I think is the year, and they needed to be sited in wood, stovewood or stone. I guess that's it in a nutshell. So, they adapted those amendments where you could have a standalone gallery as long as it was going in a building that qualified. Now, five years later, they've decided that they don't care anymore about when the building was built. They just want it to have that wood siding or stovewood or stone construction. So, that's the second topic, and I can take questions now if anybody has any.
Are there any questions?
Well, and Mariah, correct me if I'm wrong, Liberty Grove will monitor the buildings that are approved for the art galleries?
My understanding is that we would do this the same way that we do for Gibraltar with their sign overlay. Gibraltar's got some design requirements that the town sometimes gets to have some say in. What we do is, we meet with the applicants, like we always do, explain the rules to them, and then notify them of the requirement, because this is our ordinance, and once this gets adopted, that they need to have the building be logs, stovewood or stone, or wood siding. And if they really want to have something else, they're going to have to go to the town first and get the approval for whatever the material is before we would process the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, we're going to take a voice vote on the report, and then we'll have a motion, a second, and go to a recorded vote on the ordinance itself. Correct, Grant? That's the way to go, right?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed, and make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve zoning ordinance 2013-10.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David. Is there any more discussion?
I forgot to add one thing, if I could.
Go ahead.
The modification that was made at the Resource Planning Committee level was to that last sentence you'll see in the top half of the page 31 where it's talking, I guess I'll just look at that line, 17 through 19. There was discussion at the committee level as to whether or not that was clearly worded the first time around, and so we kind of just reorganized the phrases to make it mean what the town said it wanted it to mean.
Okay. If not, are you ready?
I think so.
Go to the voter board, and we'll try.
No.
Now.
No.
That has passed on a vote of nineteen yes and two absent. Next item is the text amendment for DATCP.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the text amendment, yeah, let's see, what is it? Regarding notifications to the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection. It's requested, the Resource Planning Committee petitioned to amend Section 11.04/9/A, which details the notification procedure to the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection for all conditional uses approved in the exclusive agricultural zoning district. And the explanation below it is, the Resource Planning Committee petitioned to delete the section, as both the statute section and the notification requirement referenced within no longer exist. And we approved it, the zoning amendment petition for 2013-11.
And you're making that motion?
Uh, no, yeah, I'm making that motion to approve it.
Who is second for the report?
Second.
Susan, seconded. Is there any discussion? Mariah, do you have anything to add?
Not really. This is just a section that we missed when we were doing all of those amendments regarding the exclusive agricultural zoning district, which is only found in Claybanks, and this is a requirement that no longer exists in the statutes.
Okay, we'll take a voice vote on the report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. You want to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment 2013-11.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. We're going to have a roll call vote voice-wise.
Yep.
Why don't you take that and start with me. You ready to start it?
All right. Austin?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Engelbert?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Firestein?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Gunlickson?
Yes.
Gaines? Kohalt?
Yes.
Lino?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Mulliken?
Yes.
Ninus?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Runquist?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Verley?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Zipper?
Yes.
That has passed on a vote of nineteen yes and zero noes. So, we'll go to the next one, text amendment regarding auditoriums.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hugh. Was that Hugh? Yeah. Go ahead and explain that one.
The Resource Planning Committee petitioned to amend Sections 2.05/3/ A and B, 7.02/1/ A and 13.02 of the Door County Zoning Ordinance, establishing auditorium as a new land use category. The county zoning ordinance does not contain, currently does not contain adequate allowances for or regulations regarding auditoriums, the primary focus of which are performances for the public. Examples are Door County Community Auditorium and True Blood Performing Arts Center. And the recommendation from the committee is to recommend approval of this zoning amendment petition and the enactment of ammendatory ordinance 2013-12.
Do you have anything else to add to that, Mariah?
Not really. It's, I mean, obviously, we've cobbled together ways in the past to authorize the True Blood on the island and the Door Community Auditorium in Fish Creek, but this is part of that broader package of amendments, and this is the last of them, that we've been working on the last year or two, that includes fine arts venues, assembly halls, auditoriums. We've been trying to clarify the difference between those and schools and town halls and community centers, and so this will be the last, this one and the next one of that set.
Okay. Are there any questions? If not, on the report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed, and an emotion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Hugh. Are there any questions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Brand?
Here. Yes.
No, you're not here.
Are you paying attention?
Engelbert?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Firestein?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Gunlickson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Kohalt?
Yes.
Lino?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Mulliken?
Yep.
Ninus?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Runquist?
Yes.
Schultz?
Here, yes. I'm here too.
Verley?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Zipper?
Yes.
Me.
Austin?
Yes. That has passed on a vote of nineteen yes, two absent. Next item is the text amendment assembly halls. Ken?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the report concerning text amendment regarding assembly halls. It's basically the same as auditoriums, it's just to get the clarification out there.
Okay, is there a second to this motion? Seconded by Susan. Is there any questions? Mariah's here. Is there anything to add to that?
I mean, if you want, I can just give a brief clarification of the difference between an assembly hall and an auditorium, as Ken read in the auditorium section. An auditorium is really a place where you go and you sit down and you listen to a concert or see a play or something like that. Assembly halls are, as we've defined it, places for social or educational gatherings. There could be a concert there, somebody could rent it for a wedding, somebody could rent it for a family reunion, there could be an art exhibit there. So, it's something that seems to be an increasing need. We've had a number of inquiries from people about having some sort of way to regulate places like that, where you've got potentially a variety of activities going on. And the amendments were drafted such that they're allowed in the commercial districts, and they're also allowed in outlying more agricultural districts, as long as they're on relatively large lot sizes and large setbacks, et cetera. And there was a modification recommended at the Resource Planning Committee level based on a request from the Town of Gibraltar. So, that's what the modification is.
Did we get a second on that? Okay. Are there any questions? If not, a voice vote on approving the report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance 2013-13.
Seconded by Hugh. Are there any more questions? Joel?
Mariah, can you clarify? I was just reading through this here, and some caught my eye for clarification. On where it says, I guess it'd be line number 27, where it's talking about some of the criteria. It says in general, G-A-P-A-C-S-H-L-N-E-S, that's countryside and estate zoning, right, which are five and 10 acre minimums?
Right.
Then when you go down to number three, it says such facilities shall be located in a parcel of at least 20 acres.
Right. So, even though the regular minimum lot size for those districts is smaller, this kind of parallels what we did with the fine arts venue campus amendments, where you have to have something that's a margin would normally be required for that district. I mean, as we talked about it, the Resource Planning Committee, people don't move out into the country to live next to one of these, and that's why we made it relatively restrictive as far as the lot size, and that it had to go into existing buildings if you're going to be in those outlying areas.
I guess it seemed funny to me, because if I have a state zoning that's five acres or countryside, whichever is which, which is only required to only be five, it's saying that it has to be at least 20. It seems kind of backwards. It just, maybe it's not sitting right, I don't know, but.
Yeah. I mean, the fine arts venue, I think, I can't recall off the top of my head, but there are other uses within the ordinance where there's special requirements, where you have to have more land over and above kind of the regular base requirements to be able to do certain uses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Engelbert?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Firestein?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Gunlickson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Lino?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Mulliken?
Yep.
Ninus?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Runquist?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Verley?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Zipper?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
That has passed on a vote of nineteen two absent. Next is, there's no new business that I know of, oral committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? Chuck?
Yeah, I guess we'd just like to make the board members aware that we're doing a formal penny park dedication out here at the old Stone Quarry, and it's set for July 25th, which is a Sunday, I believe, at 1:00 PM, and all members are invited to attend.
Okay, thank you. Any other oral committee reports? John?
I would just say I recommend that we don't park on a bridge when it's going open.
Okay, good thought. Susan?
The Legislative Days Committee knows this, but Bill Schuster told us at the last one, and you guys may see this in the paper, so just so you know, one of the results of Legislative Days is that the Wisconsin Coastal Management is going to hold listening sessions in three, three on Lake Michigan, one on Lake Superior this summer. So, citizens who have concerns about the impact of lake levels being historically low can come to these and share their stories and make recommendations. The goal is not to come there and complain that the lake levels are low, or to suggest that they, that be fixed, but how can you be helped in dealing with the impacts? So, it should be, you should see this, I would think, pretty soon in the paper, but the dates hadn't been set yet.
Okay. Are there any other oral committee reports? If not, we'll go to review committee minutes. Anybody have any questions on any of the minutes? Going once. If not, we'll go to review vouchers, claims and bills. Anybody have any questions on vouchers, claims and bills? Quite a bunch. If not, the reminder of, you got to get to Jill Lau before Friday, the July 19th, to tell her whether you're going to the WCA convention. Also, the payroll will be delayed this month, a couple weeks, I guess, because Jill's out of the office until Thursday. And the next county board meeting is the 23rd of July at 9:00 at this